All right, I think it's that time. Can everybody hear me okay? Steve, can you hear in the back? Can you hear me? Okay, all right, fantastic. Well, we've got a fairly lengthy agenda and a full house, which is great, so we'll not keep it too long tonight. First and foremost, as most of you already know, but I want to just reiterate this and make sure that I make a public statement about it, but we lost Mr. Anderson. And I can say for the entire council that we are all deeply saddened and moved. There's just not a lot you can say or put into words that will console or make the family feel better, but for anybody who's watching or anybody who's not familiar, I just want to make sure everybody understands that we did lose a council member and we're just very, very sorry. So I would like to just real briefly have a moment of silence for him in his honor, and although he's not with us, his legacy and his commitment to this community will Thank you all very much. Having said that, again, I would like to welcome everybody to the regularly scheduled April the 4th council meeting. And as I always say, we've got so many things to celebrate, but tonight we really do have quite a lot to celebrate. So thank you, everybody, for coming. Y'all look great. And at this time, Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Owens.
Here.
Ms. Pillion.
Here.
Ms. Quetch.
Here.
And Mayor Whit.
Here. At this time, I would like to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And now I have the astute honor of welcoming Mr. Brad Farmer, the Executive Director of Faith in Action, to come lead us in prayer.
Thank you. Dear Heavenly Father, God, we pause again to thank you for the life of James Anderson, God. I thank you for his service to the country and I thank you for his service to this community. God, we ask you to just lift up his family, God, give them the peace, comfort, and strength that they need to face these days ahead, God. And as we start this meeting, God, I pray that you would bless these council members and the mayor and all the staff. God, we thank you for the residents that voted them in to represent them, and I thank you for these men and women that have chosen to represent our town so well. God, I pray that you would always give them direction and guidance, God, on every issue they face and every task that comes before them, God, that you would help them to make decisions that would lead Abingdon forward in a way that's pleasing to you and that is pleasing to the residents that voted them in. God, watch over this meeting, have your way through it. Thank you for all the folks that are here that have come out tonight that represent the town of Abingdon. And God, we just pray that you would have your way. Watch over each and every one of us, God. Help us to always grow closer to each other and closer to you in everything we say and do. We ask all this in the name of Jesus. Amen. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for that beautiful prayer. All right. Ms. Kingsley, do we have any public comments?
Yes, sir.
So no public comments signed up for tonight?
You need to approve the agenda, Mayor.
Oh, I skipped right over. I was thinking it was below camp. Thank you. So at this point in time, we'd like to approve the agenda. I would like to make one change personally. Under item P1, the swearing-in of Abingdon Police Department Sergeants, very exciting stuff. We don't want them to have to sit here all night, so we're going to put that as H2 under the proclamation for the indoor track team. If that's okay, council, I would entertain a motion to do so.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Owens to approve the agenda with that change. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Quetch. Any discussion, council? Hearing done. Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Ms. Pillion.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
And Mayor Whit.
Aye. That brings us to the approval of the minutes. Council, if there are no changes, we could take up the March 7th and the March 16th, 2022 minutes at the same time.
I'll move to approve them.
Motion by Ms. Pillion to approve both the March 7th and 16th minutes at the same time. Do I have a second?
Second.
I don't know who beat you, but I'm going to give it to Vice Mayor Quetch. So second, Vice Mayor Quetch, any discussion, council? Hearing done. Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Owens.
Aye.
Ms. Pillion.
Aye.
Ms. Quetch.
Aye.
And Mayor Whit.
Aye. And that brings us to the moments we've all been waiting for. Number one, under Proclamations, we have a proclamation honoring and recognizing the Abingdon High School girls and boys track teams. They were both Region 3D champions, and the boys actually pulled off the state championships, which is pretty wild. You know, before I say my little spill, which I feel like I'm a broken record because you guys and girls are here so often, to be recognized, I would like to offer for Coach Sweeney, I think he had a few things he wanted to say about this special team, men and women.
Sure, I just wanted to mention how amazingly special this group was for both of our teams. Just to kind of give you a little bit of backstory, a couple of years ago, two years ago, our program finished ninth place at the region in girls and ninth place in the region in the boys. Last year, our program finished second place in the region in the girls, second place in the region in the boys. This year, our team finished first place in the region in the girls, first place in the region in the boys. So obviously, we're moving in the right direction, which is an amazing accomplishment for these athletes. And what's so exciting is we have so much potential here that we'll be back again. We lose a lot of seniors on the boys' side, and we've returned so many. So it's going to be exciting. And obviously, this season was amazingly special for myself personally, just as a runner, and I've supported this program for so long, and for all of these kids. It was an amazing accomplishment. So for myself, Coach Martin, I think everyone in our program is so excited for the progress that we've made and what we can continue to do now that we have this foundation set. And I mean, we've talked about this for years, and so it's so exciting for everyone. And I just wanted to thank you all so much for inviting us and honoring these amazing athletes.
Our pleasure, our pleasure. Well, you know, as I said before, I feel like a broken record, but I would be remiss if I didn't mention all of the different things that I have thought about and reflected upon with this track team, men and women. Most of you already know me. I've run with many of you. And just a little bit of, I guess, background, you know, Coach Sweeney and I have run together for many years, and he's right, we talked a decade ago. I mean, I know we're getting old, but we talked a decade ago about what it takes to get a program to the level where you guys and girls are today. You are exemplary programs in southwest Virginia, and it's true, you're accomplishing so many things that Coach Sweeney and I weren't able to accomplish. And just to make matters even more awkward, Coach Martin was my coach. So I'm not that old. I'm not that old, okay? But he's still, you know, he's still coaching, plugging along, and we're appreciative of your contribution and coming back to be with these guys and girls. You know, it takes such a foundation from an early age to get to where you all are today. And I have to tip my hat to Coach Sweeney because he has put the time in and he has dedicated himself to bettering you guys as athletes. And we're just so thrilled to have so many fantastic accomplishments in one season. And I'm going to talk a little bit about all the different state, I guess, all-state athletes that we had. You know, you guys and girls don't realize this, now, I once a time was all-state, right? But there weren't dozens of all-state athletes in one season. You guys have literally accomplished that in one season, which is just incredible to me. We started off the meet, I believe, with, was it the 1600 meters? Is that right? Or was it the four-by-eight that was first?
Four-by-eight.
Four-by-eight, okay, yeah. So the four-by-eights, and I'll put these guys on the hot seat because they broke the school record, what was it, eight minutes and 10 seconds or 808? 810? Yeah. Which is, by the way, parents, is fast, very fast. So Dylan, Isaac, Jack, and Teddy, of course, set it on fire to start the meet off with and had a state championship four-by-eight team, won by 15 seconds, if I'm not mistaken, which is just, I mean, blistering competition. So obviously, you guys set it up for just an incredible meet. 1600 meters, I think Dylan, Isaac, and Jack first, second, and third, is that right? Yeah, see, I do pay attention. And then Isaac and Jack, first and second in the 3200. Reeves pulled off a fifth, wow. I mean, I don't want to say nowhere, but still impressive, you know, nonetheless. Teddy and Dylan, third and fourth in the 1000. Xander, what an accomplishment in the 55 and the 300, second in both, is that what I remember? See, I do pay attention, right? And then pulling a guy from the basketball team, James, really? Huh? Third place in the high jump and long jump, incredible. I mean, really, I was a bit of a high jumper myself, but, you know, not that good. And then on the women's side, you know, what a developing program. Michaela, second in the 3200, barely, barely got second. What was it, half a second? Is that, yeah, what I remember, wow, incredible. Josie pulls off fourth in the 500, incredible. And then Chloe, fifth in the 300. Did I miss anybody that was all-state? Don't feel bad.
Greg wasn't too much.
Okay, all right, I apologize. I knew I would miss somebody, but I tried to do my homework. But, you know, again, just how many state, all-state athletes can we have in one meet? I mean, just incredible. Everybody just give them a round of applause. And again, you know, it's not something you can do overnight. It takes years, if not decades, to create a program that is on the verge of a dynasty. Coach Sweeney, but, no, 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 we got you back in it. But, you know, all of those things said, I just want you guys to realize how proud, how truly proud we are of what you've accomplished, and you should be proud. It's just incredible. We're so psyched for you. And at this time, I would like Ms. Pillion to read the proclamation that we have crafted in your honor.
And of course, I am especially proud because I have a child who is an all-state athlete, but I don't know how many of you know this, but almost every single one of you I have known since you were very small children. And many of you have spent lots and lots of time in and out of my house, and I'm very proud of all of you. So whereas the town of Abingdon wishes to honor and recognize the Abingdon High School girls and boys indoor track team for winning the Region 3D championship on February 18th, 2022, at Roanoke College, and for winning the boys' Class III state championship on February 28th to March 1st, 2022, at Liberty University, and whereas the commitment required for student athletes to be a part of a sports team includes meeting required academic success, attendance, and commitment to a rigorous daily training program, and whereas the girls' team scored 132 points, winning the Region 3D championship, outscoring second by 12 points, and whereas the boys' team scored 167 points, winning the Region 3D championship, outscoring second by 76 points, and the Class III state championship scoring 97 points, outscoring second by 34 points, and whereas Dylan Phillips was an individual state champion in the 1600 meters, and whereas Isaac Teason was an individual state champion in the 32 meters, and whereas Teddy Pillion, Jack Bundy, Isaac Teason, and Dylan Phillips won the state championship in the four-by-800 meter relay, and whereas the coaching staff and members of the Abingdon High School boys indoor track team made a significant impact on their school and community by qualifying the team and by winning the state championship, the first in Abingdon High School history, and whereas it is with pride the town council recognizes the commitment and dedication of these students who serve as a model for citizens of the Commonwealth, and now therefore, by the authority invested in our mayor, on behalf of the Abingdon Town Council and citizens, we commend the 2022 Abingdon High School girls and boys indoor track team for their tireless efforts and achievements. The council wishes them success in their future endeavors.
So before I come up and hand these plaques out to the athletes, I want to say two things. One, I was right in my prediction that Isaac is now the fastest Teason in the household. Let the record show. And two, ladies, you guys need to hand it to the boys next year. So we're very excited. Y'all only lose one senior, is that right? One senior? Is there one senior?
Oh, Admiral.
Yeah, so a handful, a few. So we fully expect you guys to bring home more hardware next year than the boys do.
Okay, for the girls, Cory Andis.
And if you guys and gals want to line up kind of towards the end this way, we'll get us a big picture.
Lindsay Blackman.
Now, I got that one, but I'm going to mess this one up. Claire, how do I say it? DeKinn, sorry. I was all proud of that. Jettie Sullivan. Okay, now for the boys. Jack Bundy.
Don't you keep pushing down that way and maybe fill in behind the ladies, perhaps. Yeah, don't get too close to one another now. We don't want this to be awkward.
J.J. Dylan Phillips. Teddy Pillion.
They may, they may have broken my school record. Yeah, I forgot that.
Kaden Sheffield. Brett Stone. And then finally, our coaches. Brent Sweeney, our head coach. And then one, Brad Bussi.
It's not often you have all these guys and gals get here.
Everybody smile, smile for the cameras, huh? Excellent. Thank y'all again.
I don't know where he is.
And I know that many of you all have workouts to do and all that fun stuff, so we don't expect you to stay for the rest of the meeting. You're off the hot seat.
Hey, Coach, only like five more state titles before we forget you went to John Bowden.
And we'll make you, we'll make it official. Fantastic. I have, I have no doubt. Thanks, man. Appreciate you. Thank you for coming.
It was, that was an exciting day. Two days.
All right. I know that's hard to follow, hard act to follow, but we're moving on to another very exciting time. I would like to ask Chief Holbrook to come up for the swearing-in of Abingdon Police Welcome, Chief.
Thank you. Thank you for moving me forward.
Absolutely.
Mayor, members of the council, just give them a moment just to come in for a second.
Sure.
All right, I think we got everybody here. It's a pleasure and an honor to be able to come up here and tell you about some, a couple of the promotions and how they get sworn in for the sergeant position. Right now, I have two that are going to be promoted. We went through a very extensive promotion process that involved four different stages. I had a written test that was outsourced to be graded. I had essay questions that we had community members actually grade and get back to us with. I had a panel interview that also involved community members and then their education experience, training, et cetera. And I put it in a very competitive process, and everybody that was in the process did fantastic. It was really humbling to realize how many good officers I have and how well they did. The feedback from the community that were involved were just very impressed, and it's an honor to have those kind of officers working for me. But I can't promote everybody, so I took the top three, two of which are here, one decided to wait till the next council meeting. So let me introduce you to the new sergeants. So if Cody Johnson and Matt Field will walk up. So Cody, Cody Johnson, he's got 12 years of law enforcement experience. He joined the Abingdon Police Department in 2019. He previously worked for the Washington County Sheriff's Office as an SRO and before that with the Damascus Police Department. Since he's been with us, he's been acting as the acting supervisor for his shift. He's been doing fantastic at that. He's also a DCJS certified instructor and field training officer. He possesses an associate's degree in administration of justice from Virginia Howland's Community College and is attending King University currently to work on his criminal justice degree. Matt Fields, he's got eight years of law enforcement, and he joined us in February of 2020. Previously, he worked as a school resource officer at the Washington County Sheriff's Office and before that at the Toweswell PD and the Richlands Police Department. He as well was selected as an acting supervisor while he was going through the promotional process in which he did a fantastic job in addition. He is a DCJS field training officer, and they both possess numerous certifications. I won't bore you with the entire list, but they are certified in a lot of things. Matt also possesses an associate of arts degree from the Southwest Virginia Community College. These two work extremely hard and I'm extremely excited to get them sworn in, and their new rank is patrol sergeant. Kim, you would swear them in, please?
Mr. Johnson, if you step forward. Raise your hand. Do you David Katty Johnson solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Virginia, and the laws and ordinances of the town of Abingdon, that you will abide by the Code of Ethics for Law Enforcement Officers and the rules and regulations of the town of Abingdon Police Department, that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all the duties incumbent upon you as a sergeant for the town of Abingdon according to the best of your ability, so help you God.
Yes, ma'am, I do.
Would you sign this, Mr. Johnson? Thank you, sir. Mr. Fields. Go raise your right hand, please. Do you Matthew or Field solemnly swear to support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Virginia, and the laws and ordinances of the town of Abingdon, that you will abide by the Code of Ethics for Law Enforcement Officers and the rules and regulations of the town of Abingdon Police Department, that you will faithfully and impartially discharge and perform all duties incumbent upon you as the sergeant for the town of Abingdon according to the best of your ability, so help you God.
Yes, ma'am.
Congratulations. Thank you.
And with that, I would like to invite Cody Sun and daughter are going to come and pin on the sergeant's stripes for Cody. And we'll get Matt Fields, significant other, just to kind of... Congratulations, gentlemen.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. All right. So we're moving on to public hearings and the proverbial Myanna show. As we have many, many topics that Myanna will be discussing with us tonight, thank you so much in advance. Now, Myanna, would you rather discuss these things before the public hearing or we're going to talk about them in the first reading, before the first readings, or how do you want to do it procedurally?
Procedurally, probably before the public hearing. So if you have any comments, then you know what they're discussing or the rest of the public does.
All right, so fill us all in then. Number one, oh, and I should preface it by saying there is a section of public comments during the public hearing. It's limited to five minutes per person. If you have, I guess, signed up on the sheets, did we have anybody sign up?
Yes, sir.
Okay, no signups. So number one is the amendment of ordinance 62-61, pave sidewalks to be kept clean and unobstructed to allow commercial businesses an annual sidewalk usage permit. Myanna?
All right. We talked a little bit about this one in the mid-month meeting. So for everybody who wasn't there, I'll just give a little bit of a background. There's been an increase in the desire for outdoor retail. We've got sales, advertisement, seating, and other encroachments into the town of Abingdon sidewalks. This week, we added busking. We talked about painters, a wide variety of entertainment things that could occur on the town sidewalks. And right now, really, the only thing that we have and have been using is an encroachment permit, which is really not set up for this type of permitting process. That's really if you're closing down a road and you need to place up the cones and you're doing some work. So we had talked all together, town staff, and said, we really would like a permit that people can use the sidewalks and put chairs out there and really have that active downtown. And so the key thing is right now, the code reads 62-61, pave sidewalks to be kept clean and unobstructed. The owners and occupants of lots of budding on the streets of the town shall keep the paved sidewalks in front of their premises free from dirt, filth, trash, snow, ice, wood, coal, barrels, boxes, or any other obstruction likely to interfere with convenience of the public. So basically, it's not allowed. You really can't have even a sandwich board sign out there. So we worked together to figure out what would be the best way to amend that. And on page two in your packet, we're asking the council to add the language, "Commercial businesses may use approved portions of sidewalks only upon town approval of an annual sidewalk usage permit." Accompanying that is a sidewalk usage permit that we would have for dining, sandwich board signs, retail, seating art. And now we would be adding to this performer, performances or performers. And so there's a couple of things that we need to do with that permit. We need to ensure that there's adequate width of the sidewalk for ADA compliance. We need to have proof of liability coverage for seating and dining. And then if there is the outdoor alcohol consumption, we need proof that alcohol consumption has been permitted with their ABC, with our permit. And so with that, if there's any questions about it, I know the sentence is pretty short that we're looking to add. It's "Commercial businesses may use approved portions of sidewalks only upon town approval of an annual sidewalk usage permit." So you can answer questions and if there's public comment.
Sure. Counsel, do you have any questions for Myanna?
I thought it was very well crafted, and it certainly cleans up any, you know, I guess, gray zone with regards to whether we can or can't. So thank you for your hard work on that.
Counsel, if you have no questions, at this time, this is a public hearing. I'll open up the public hearing and ask if anybody would like to speak. Second call, anybody like to speak? If no one wants to speak, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to the next item. You're fine, guys, come on in. So number two, we have a proposed zoning text amendment to Appendix B zoning ordinance, Article 8, OH, Old and Historic District, Section 8.2, subsection 8.213, to add hotels as a special use. Myanna?
All right. So we had a citizen, Nate Berg, make a request to the Planning Commission on March 28th to add hotels as a list of permitted uses in the Old and Historic Subdistrict 13. I did put a map in your packets so that you could see what Old Historic Subdistrict 13 is. It's pretty small. It's the Old Abingdon Hotel, it's Mama Mia's. It's just a pretty small district down there. The Planning Commission said they thought it was a good idea to have hotels, but they wanted it as a special use permit, which means it goes through Planning Commission review and then town council review. And so that's what we brought back to the Planning Commission. And that's what they went through their public hearing process at their last meeting and recommended the approval. A couple of findings, just for the record. Per the Code of Virginia 15.2-2283, "The purpose of the zoning ordinance shall promote health, safety, and general welfare of the public." There's quite a few references in the comprehensive plan related to growth, tourism, an active town with amenities and experiences. So it does seem like it makes a lot of sense in our historic district. And also just that we do have an interested party who's looking to update a historic structure. And when you have something like that, you really want to, we really want to encourage that in our downtown. And so the comprehensive plan did support that. Some of the questions about whether or not, you know, it would be part of logic and orderly development. Again, this district historically allowed hotels, and so this is in keeping with that. Whether or not there'd be any adverse impacts on natural environment, water, air, noise, et cetera. And again, all of those types of things, adverse impacts to the environment, would be handled in a site plan review and then at the construction phase. And so this zone text amendment would not cause any impacts to that. So Planning Commission voted unanimously, and they recommended that town council recommend approval. And with that, if you have any questions, I can answer them.
Counsel, any questions for Myanna? Myanna, you do such a good job with all of your background research that we just don't have a lot left to ask.
That's good.
I don't know if it's a good or bad thing, but you are very, very thorough.
I did want to say, Myanna, that I was disappointed that I don't get to ask questions. Because you guys do such a thorough job, you and your team, that...
I really do.
You answer all of them before we get here. So thank you for doing such a thorough job.
It's impressive.
It is a team effort, definitely, too. We have very good staff down there. And I do think, I'm proud to say, we're one of the departments that isn't looking for additional staff. So I feel like we've got a really good team and we're doing a lot of good work right now.
You're doing a great job. And I felt like it was consistent by all stretches of the imagination that I, I mean, everything I read. So thank you again. This is a public hearing, so at this time, I will open the public hearing and call if anybody would like to come up and speak. Second call. If nobody wants to speak, I'll close the public hearing. Number three is a proposed zoning text amendment to Appendix B zoning ordinance, Article 10, B1 Limited Business District, Section 10.2, Special Uses, Section 10.22, to add hotels. Myanna?
All right. So similar request. It is a request to add the hotels to the B1. Again, there was a map placed in your packet that shows the B1 district. It's a little bit of a larger district. It is a mix of residential, but as probably most of you know, there's a wide number of little different businesses. There's actually some Airbnb-type short-term rentals, like inns and mini hotels, one might say. So again, the Planning Commission, the request was for it to be in allowed permitted use. The Planning Commission asked that it comes back as a special use permit rather than permitted. And so you can see that we added that. Again, findings, just because it is a second, a second item here, even though it sounds very similar. "The purpose of the zoning ordinance is to promote health, safety, and general welfare." Once again, the comprehensive plan supported the need for additional hotels to support all of our activities and amenities. The B1 district does allow short-term rentals. So that was one of the things where you've already got the ability for overnight stays, and so this would be supporting that as well. The community's growing. We do see an increased number of tourist features. And so there, once again, we don't see that there'd be any adverse impacts to the natural environment with this zone text amendment. Planning Commission initiated the request on February 28th. Planning Commission had a public hearing on March 24th, and they're recommending tonight that you recommend approval.
Counsel, any questions for Myanna? Myanna, just to clarify, I mean, some people maybe that are listening would, don't have access to this map or haven't looked. I mean, that doesn't mean you can go in and throw a Holiday Inn in in the middle of downtown, correct? I mean, this means we're just, you still have to abide by all the building and historic, if it's in the historic district, et cetera, et cetera, all of the guidelines. So it's not like you can just go in and throw a Hojo in, for lack of a better expression, which those may be extinct now, I'm not sure.
You are showing your age by saying that.
I told you guys, I'm aging, I'm aging. It's this, this is aging me.
You're correct. So when we talked about the one in the OH district, that one, not only would it need to go through a special use permit hearing and for the, for the public, that means that surrounding neighbors are notified. In that situation, it would go in front of the Historic Review Board, then to the Planning Commission, then to you.
Right.
So it'd be a pretty long process if somebody wanted to come in with such a huge hotel. They'd be asking for quite a few additional things. Same thing in the B1. The only step that wouldn't occur in the B1 is they wouldn't be going through the historic preservation piece.
Right.
So they'd go to Planning Commission, they'd come to you, and you'd make the decision. So if it didn't fit, you could definitely deny the special use permit.
I just, I just wanted to clarify that because I know we've all committed to, you know, preserving the integrity of downtown, and we just didn't want people to think we're throwing in just random hotels. That's not at all, I think, the plan. Is that right, Nate?
There's a height requirement.
Right, sure, sure. Yeah. I'll tell you what, just let me go ahead and open the public comments, and you come on up. Because this is a public hearing. Come on up, Nate, and give us those comments.
Yeah, so the, I did want to clarify that already on the books, there are, there's a 35-foot height requirement in that area. So you're absolutely right. This is not for just, you know, putting in a big, you know, skyscraper. know, skyscraper or something. This is more for boutique hotels, smaller, you know, something that fits with the aesthetic of the community.
I expect no less from you. I just, I just wanted to clarify that so people weren't thinking, oh, no, they're just, you know, infiltrating downtown.
That's a great, very good point, yes.
Thank you, appreciate that. Anybody else like to say anything during the, the public hearing? All right, we'll close the public hearing. All right, that brings us to number four, which is a proposed zoning map amendment to rezone tax map ID 013-1-133, parcel consisting of 1.012 acres, more or less located at 216 Park Street, from M1 Limited Industrial District to B1 Limited Business District. Myanna?
All right. So, yes, we have another request, and this one is specific to a piece of property. So, for the public, the difference really is that the two, the two that we had before, the three that we had before are talking about changing the actual ordinance, changing the code. This one is about a specific piece of property. So, we're looking at 216 Park Street. Right now, it's M1. Most people probably know it as the old jail. That's, that's what probably most people, it was the Washington County Jail at the time. There's also the Holston Mountain Artisan Shop on the same lot. So, there, with the closing of the jail a while ago, the current owners are looking to redevelop this project, and their application said renovate a two-story brick building and add a third floor. Footprint of the building will remain unchanged. Right now, in their desires to do a boutique hotel, short-term rental type of facility, and that isn't allowed in the M1. So, the M1 is, is rather specific. It's more industrial manufacturing. One of the questions that always comes up when you're changing a parcel is spot zoning. Why is this not spot zoning? It's just one parcel. So, you look at the surrounding properties and surrounding this parcel is B1. So, by changing this one parcel to B1, you're actually continuing the pattern rather than looking at this as, hey, it's one, one parcel that's changing. So, with that, in the B1, they can do short-term rentals. Hotel isn't allowed in the B1, but based on the previous public hearing, if you choose to put that into motion tonight, then the, the options kind of open up to both hotel and short-term rental in B1. Access will continue to be from Park Street. The relevant factors to consider when you're looking at a zone map amendment are, again, the character of the property, comp plan, suitability of the property for various uses, trends, current and future requirements of the community, transportation requirements of the community, requirements for infrastructure, and then the conservation of natural resources, and the encouragement of the most appropriate use of land throughout the locality. And so, when we look at this, staff, you know, findings include that the area is developed into an eclectic mix of businesses there. It continues, Abingdon continues to be a recreational tourist mecca, so we would like to cater to some of those users. This is really close to the terminus of the Creeper Trail. And to find somebody who's willing to redevelop a historic type of structure like a jail into a more modern use is an impressive reuse of a structure. So, while this property is partially in the floodplain, that is a subsequent hearing, which is number five on the list, and so, we can discuss that when we get there. But the request at this point is to change the zone map from M1 to B1.
Counsel? Again, she makes it so easy, but do we have any questions for Myanna?
Unfortunately not.
You're going to think of a question during some of this, I guarantee you. All right, this is a public hearing, so at this time, I'll open the public hearing if anyone would like to come up and speak. Second call. If there's no one, I'll close the public hearing and we'll move to number five. I would like to say, Nate, not to call you out on this, but I can't wait to see the plans because, you know, I've heard some rumors and it looks pretty fantastic, so it's, I think it's going to be interesting. Number five is the proposed special use permit to renovate this two-story brick building and add a third floor as is required for action within the designated flood hazard area per section number 15-9 of the zoning ordinance in the AE Flood Hazard District, task map ID 013-1-133 at 216 Park Street. Myanna?
Okay. So, we kind of went from looking at the code and the ordinances down to looking at a zone map amendment on one parcel, and now, we're looking at a very specific project. So, if you choose to zone this property from M1 to B1, this is the same property that we were talking about before at 216 Park. If you look at page two in your packet on this topic, you'll see the parcel in the vicinity map, and then you can see the section that is part of the flood hazard area, which takes up maybe about two-thirds of the parcel on the southern, the southern portion. You know, again, this was originally the home of the Washington County Jail. It does currently have the Holston Mountain Artisan Shop as well. The key thing to remember with this one is that they're looking to renovate this two-story brick building and add a third floor. The footprint of the building remains the same. So, it's already in the floodplain, it's already impeding any type of flooding that could occur there, so nothing is changing the base floor elevation. The adjacent uses are all B1. The way that this type of item comes to you is that all uses, activities, and development occurring within any flood hazard district shall be undertaken only upon the issuance of a special use permit. So, that means Planning Commission hears it, you all hear it, and if you choose to adopt a resolution, then the applicant can go forward. So, it's allowed, but again, if we were looking at a, a building that was actually changing the elevation in the base flood, if we were looking at a building that was adding more structures in the flood district, we might have a different interpretation. But you can take a look at the Town Engineer Tyler Vinsel's analysis, and he determined that this did need a special use permit, but he also made a determination that it was the study that was provided, he said, "A conservative approach without additional project cross-information assumes that the improvements fall within Section E as a substantial improvement defined as any reconstruction, rehabilitation, addition, or other improvement of a structure, the cost of which equals or exceeds 50% of the market value of the structure before the start of the construction of the improvement." He said, "The flood report indicates that no addition or new construction is proposed outside of the existing building footprint and therefore will not result in any increase in the base flood elevation. It is, in my opinion, that the criteria set out within the task code has been performed using good engineering principles and methods and satisfies those requirements." So, he recommended approval of the special use permit to the Planning Commission. When we met with the Planning Commission, they voted unanimously to recommend approval. Staff did have some conditions with this approval. The submittal of a final site plan with landscaping, submittal of a final site plan with lighting, submittal of a sign permit, and then submittal of all the applicable building permits to ensure compliance with the VA/USBC for both construction permitting and for required floodproofing. So, if you choose to recommend approval tonight, we are suggesting a few conditions to add to your motion. So, that will be heard as a resolution, but if you have any questions right now, I can try to answer them.
I don't think I have any questions. Counsel, do we have any questions for Myanna? She's, again, has...
Very thorough.
Very, very thorough. Do, one thing that did come to mind, Myanna, is, and I just want to clarify this for, for those maybe who are watching, but those, those parcels appear to have adequate parking already, correct?
That's correct. And there, it's basically, what I would call it is a shared parking model. So, you do have parking for, for all the facilities on the parcels. At one time, I think there was a, a thought that there might be a subdivision of the parcels, but there isn't that in the, in the decision-making process right now. So, yeah, we're looking at a parcel that parking could be adequate for all of those different uses there.
I mean, I thought so. I just wanted to make sure I wasn't missing something, yeah.
Correct.
Okay. Fantastic. Counsel, any other questions? Mike? You've got one, I can tell.
I'm just curious about the Park Street improvement and, and your project. Can you all coordinate that as far as curving and, it seems like, or has that already been worked out? Talking about the site plan.
Come on up.
That's a great question. And so, you know, those improvements fall right in line with, with kind of what we were already thinking for this project. And so, essentially, it just saves us from some work because those, those improvements will stretch all along Park Street and we'll incorporate those into our site plan, which we'll submit.
Excellent. Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. I was going to let you build it for him.
All right, so this is a public hearing. At this time, I'll open the public hearing for comments. Anyone like to speak? Second call. If nobody wants to speak, I'll close the public hearing and we'll move to number six, which is the proposed use of property, namely 306 Deepwater Square, also known as the train station, for lease as a retail incubator.
You want to go, you want to go, you want me to go?
Tanya, you want to approach us? Let's make Tanya.
I knew if I offered, they would let me go.
Tanya Triplett, come on up.
Thank you all. We've had some business approach us about some space for retail, and if you all have driven up and down Main Street over the past few months, we have very little open space. But we have a lot of developers who are working on spaces that could be available in the near future. So, last year, we opened up the train station for the farmer's market to expand their hours during the winter, and it worked really well. So, there's a possibility we'd like to do that again. But we thought, while we were waiting for that, that if we were to be able to subdivide that building, which is, has doors and entrances to three sections of the building, that we actually could maybe rent that by the square foot and include utilities for these businesses to get up and off the ground. We would limit it to maybe a year's term and, and possibly extending it for another year just in case there wasn't space available for them to move into. And then, they would incubate out of that retail space and, and find a spot in town. Minimal expense, the security system, fire alarm, is one now. Matt Henderson has already done some work on, some research on getting those systems separated into three parts. So, we have someone interested in the larger part. I'm talking to two or three other people that I think might be interested in the middle section. And then, my vision, if you all agree, we could maybe use some of the proceeds from the rental of those two spaces to actually improve the space on the end, nears the caboose that is really dark paneling, and there's, I think it was the police department at one time, so there's been some really small offices built there. But I think we could, we could make some improvements to, to that area with the proceeds from the other areas.
Counsel, I know we've talked about this before, but do we have any questions specifically for Ms. Triplett?
One other thing that I'd like to, that I'd like to discuss is, I know we had someone interested last year in possibly using it for some arts, and that would still be available, I think, as we, you know, if we didn't have all the sections rented out, we could still allow community organizations to use sections of it. So, say the Highlands Festival wanted to expand their photography exhibit or something that might be going on if the Arts Depot's outrun their space, I think we could still find some room for those types of things. And again, if we could make those improvements to that one area on the end, I think it would be a real benefit to the town of Abingdon and to organizations as well.
That would be fair market value.
Yes, we've done, we've done a little, a little bit of, of number work on fair market value, and I think fair market value right now is about $1.20 a square foot. So, I don't know if you all want to look at reducing that a tiny bit. Of course, each, each person's going to have the expense of moving into that space and then knowing they're going to be there for a year or possibly extending for another year, but they're going to have those moving expenses. So, that would be something that we would need to, need to discuss, if we could reduce it just a little bit to, to allow them those, those expenses. And then, we might could also look at if they want to adapt paint colors or things at their own expense as part of the lease. So, I think there'd be a wide variety of things that we, that we could discuss and, and customize it to make it work for both the town and someone who may need to use the space.
Make perfect sense.
Leave it to Ms. Triplett to add 19 things to the things that we're actually doing.
That was just a very thorough, she's...
I'm trying to keep it back off of my...
That was the long, that was the long-term goal. Technically, the only thing that we're discussing today is by statute to lease property, we have to have a public hearing prior to that, but any of these other uses, we would have a lease in place and, and have y'all vote on that before, but this is just a conceptual version.
Right. Okay. Thank you.
Great job, Tony.
Yeah. And, and as Cam stated, that this is a public hearing, so at this time, I'll open the public hearing for anybody who'd like to make comments. The public hearing is solely for the purpose of whether we will use it for this purpose or not. Anyone like to make comments? Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. And that got us through the public hearing section. Now, we are now at the resolution section. First up, we have a resolution for blanket project funding, commitment, and blanket signature authority to administer transportation projects under agreement with the Virginia Department of Transportation. Now, it's the mic, Sir Reddick. Well?
Mr. Mayor, council members, every so often, we have to come back and renew our blanket authority and signature for the town manager to execute agreements and stuff through our VDOT programs. So, I just ask that you support this resolution, support for that blanket coverage, and that way that, you know, I can get it back to VDOT. And I think the last one we did was in 2018 in the second round of Smart Scale. And generally speaking, all of our programs that we apply through VDOT is requires at least the town manager's signature and that authority.
Counsel? That's pretty cut and dry. Any questions, comments for Mike? Great job, Mike. Stay up here, though. All right.
So, we need a motion for that resolution.
So, we need to make, take a motion, okay. So, at this time, I'll entertain a motion to adopt this resolution for the blanket project funding commitment so that we can continue with our VDOT transportation.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Owens, so I have a second.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Pillion. Any discussion, counsel? Hearing none. Kim, if you'll please call the role.
Mr. Owens?
Aye.
Ms. Pillion?
Aye.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
And Mayor Whit.
Aye. It was easy, wasn't it, Mike?
Yes.
Number two, resolution supporting the French Moore Junior Boulevard extension and Cook Street extension for Virginia Department of Transportation's Smart Scale evaluation cycle for funding.
Yes, sir. Currently, we are in round five of Smart Scale, and the two projects we're working with VDOT on is the French Moore Boulevard extension and the Cook Street extension. French Moore Boulevard will be submitted by the Bristol NPO, and the Cook Street extension will be submitted by us, and we just need our resolution of support to go into that application for VDOT program.
Counsel, any questions? All right, I'd entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
I've got a question. What kind of timetable we're talking about, because we've been, I mean, we're talking 20 years before this project started.
No, no, what happens, Councilman Owens, is, once we submit it, it goes into a pre-screening, and then in June, we'll start the full application. The full application is submitted in August, and then it goes to the CTV, Commonwealth Transportation Board, for scoring, and if it scores well and it gets funded, it will go into the VDOT six-year plan. And once it goes in the six-year plan, it's probably about, well, like, six years to turn it around and get it under construction. But this is just to support the, the application process and the project.
And, and everybody's familiar with this extension, right?
Yes, this is from Cook Street over there, next to where the old Kmart is, down to Stonemil Road, and French Boulevard will be from Stonemil Road to connect to the existing French Moore Boulevard.
Yeah, so in essence, parallel to the interstate all the way down.
Yes.
Okay, just to clarify. And we have been trying to get this for a very long time.
We have been trying to get this for a few rounds.
Yeah, so we're hopeful, fingers crossed.
We're hoping this is, this is...
We're hoping this is the time, right? Yeah. All right, counsel, with no questions, I would entertain a motion to approve this resolution.
I'll say move.
Motion by Ms. Pillion, do I have a second? Motion by Ms. Pillion, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Quetch, any discussion, counsel? Hearing none, Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Owens?
Aye.
Ms. Pillion?
Aye.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
And Mayor Webb?
Aye. Thank you, Mike. Number three for resolutions. We've got a resolution approving special use permit to renovate two-story brick building and add third floor as is required for action within designated flood hazard area per section number fifteen-nine of the zoning ordinance in the AE flood hazard district, hats map ID zero-one-two-one-one-three-three, at 216 Park Street. I think we've talked about this before, haven't we?
We have. So I will not belabor the point, other than to say that the planning commission voted unanimously to recommend approval, and you had no public comment, so.
Myanna, this is your recommendation as well?
This is my recommendation as well.
But you do want that resolution subject to staff's conditions.
Conditions, yes.
Okay. Would you remind us of those conditions so we can add that in the motion?
Submitter of a final site plan landscaping, submitter of a final lighting plan, submitter of a sign permit, and submitter of all applicable building permits to the community development department to ensure compliance with the VA USBC for both construction permitting and for required flight proofing.
Excellent. Counsel, any questions, Myanna? If there's none, I would entertain a resolution to approve the special use permit with the restrictions or conditions that Myanna has just mentioned.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Owens, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Quetch, any discussion? Hearing none, Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Owens?
Aye.
Ms. Pillion?
Aye.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
And Mayor Webb?
Aye. All right, Myanna's hanging around. So it brings us to first readings of ordinances. The first reading, number one, is a first reading amendment of ordinance sixty-two-sixty-one, paved sidewalks to be kept clean and unobstructed to allow commercial businesses an annual sidewalk usage permit. Sounds like we've talked about this one before tonight.
We have definitely talked about this. So the only line for anyone who might be listening that would be added to the ordinance is commercial businesses may use approved portions of sidewalks only upon town approval of an annual sidewalk usage permit. Staff is recommending approval, and you had no public comments.
All right, counsel. I would entertain a motion to adopt the first reading of this ordinance. If so moved, we could discard with the second reading. Is that right, Kim?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make that motion, that we dispose of the second reading, accept this ordinance and dispose of the second reading.
All right, motion by Mr. Owens to adopt the ordinance for sixty-two-sixty-one and dispose of the second reading. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Pillion, any discussion, counsel? Hearing none, Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Owens?
Aye.
Ms. Pillion?
Aye.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
And Mayor Webb?
Aye. Number two is a first reading proposed zoning tax amendment to appendix B zoning ordinance, Article eight OH, which is Olden Historic District, Section eight-two, subsection eight-two-dash-thirteen, to add hotels as a special use. Myanna?
Mayor, do you wanna add number three to that?
Oh, yes. I apologize. I think we can group number two and three together, Myanna, if that's okay. Number three is a first reading proposed zoning tax amendment to appendix B zoning ordinance, Article ten B-one Limited Business District, Section ten due special uses, Section ten-two-two, to add hotels. And we can, counsel, adopt these two together if so desired. Myanna?
All right. So the only thing that I will say is that the planning commission held a public hearing on March twenty-eighth and recommended unanimously to approve it. And you had no comments for either one of these at the public hearing.
Counsel? Again, if you wish to move on this and adopt both of these, we can also dispel with the second reading, I think.
I'll make a motion to adopt them and to dispel with the second reading.
Motion by Ms. Pillion to adopt both the first second, first reading of number two and three and dispel with the second reading. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Vice Mayor Quetch, any discussion, counsel? Hearing none, Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Owens?
Aye.
Ms. Pillion?
Aye.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
And Mayor Webb?
Aye. Myanna, you're making this so easy for us.
Thank you, Quetch.
Number four. First reading proposed zoning map amendment to rezone tax map ID zero-one-three-dash-one-dash-one-three-three, parcel consisting of one-point-zero-one-two acres, more or less, located at 216 Park Street from M-one Limited Industrial to B-two, I mean, B-one Limited Business District. Myanna?
All right, not a whole lot to add, other than the planning commission held a public hearing on March twenty-eighth and recommended unanimously approval, and you had no public comments tonight.
Counsel, I think, again, we can adopt this ordinance as is and dispel with the second reading if you so choose to do so. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Owens to adopt the ordinance and dispel with the second reading. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Pillion, any discussion, counsel? Hearing none, Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Owens?
Aye.
Ms. Pillion?
Aye.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
And Mayor Webb?
Aye. And last but not least, we have a first reading. Thank you, Myanna. It was a great show. Okay, yeah, we'll welcome you back. Number five, a first reading of proposed ordinance to establish and enact inflow and infiltration of stormwater and enforcement of sewer use standards, Articles two Sewers and Sewage Disposal, Division four Waste Water Discharge, Section seventy-four-ninety-eight to seventy-four-one-zero-three. Mr. Bell?
You see which topic they left me with. I might need some help from Mr. Shoret or Woodard and Curran on these precise issues. But the background is, we've been working on this ordinance for, since before the pandemic. If you look at the ordinances, there are several that are attached. We modeled that after some other ones that we found in the Commonwealth. The gist of it is, in the past, we have done smoke testing and cammering of the sewage lines. We're getting ready to do that again. When that happens, there's, by design, what we're hoping to find are breaks in the line where water is coming in through the broken pipe or people who have sump pumps or gutters or that sort of thing tied into the sewer line. And the reason that you don't like that is that rainfall and other things other than what you're trying to treat at the sewage plant gets in there. It makes it inefficient and more costly. And we're paying to treat rainwater when we shouldn't. And we've had substantial issues with that, as Woodard and Curran has noted in their review so far. So this gives the parameters of what the town expects. There are different levels of if they find a problem with somebody's line that we will alert them. Ultimately, there could be fines and that sort of thing. We're hopeful that that won't ever happen, that we say, hey, you may not have known this, but, you know, your sewer line's got a hole in it. Or you may not know, some people found out that their gutters are attached to the line. That was not an uncommon thing in somebody who has older homes, as a lot of us do. So that's the point of it, is sort of modernize our ordinances and give our staff and Woodard and Curran some parameters to work with people and say, you know, these are the rules that everybody has to abide by. And ultimately, hopefully, that will result in more efficiency and not increased rates. I won't say lower rates, but that type of thing that's up to those guys. But that's the point.
Mike, anything you'd like to add to that?
No, I think she did pretty well.
They trained me well.
Chris, I see you in the back. You got anything you wanna add?
He did great.
He did great.
All right, excellent. So counsel, do we have any questions for any of those three gentlemen? All right, I would entertain a motion to adopt the ordinance as it is. And I think we can dispel with the second reading on that one, sir.
I'll make that motion.
All right, motion by Vice Mayor Quetch to adopt the ordinance and dispel of the second reading.
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Owens, counsel, do we have any discussion? Hearing none, Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Owens?
Aye.
Ms. Pillion?
Aye.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
And Mayor Webb?
Aye.
I can hear former Mayor Craig cheering through the Zoom.
Yeah.
This was his pet project. He'll be very pleased that this happened.
All right, that brings us to second readings of ordinances, and we don't have any of those. Don't have any consideration of bids tonight. We do have some new business, unfortunate as it may. We have to talk about petition for filling the council vacancy of Mr. Anderson. Cam?
Yes, sir. On a more somber note, and I appreciate your words about Scavo, we'll miss him a lot. But the practicality is, since he's no longer with us, the process is basically the same, albeit under different circumstances of when Mr. Bradley resigned. There's two statutory periods. The first is what we're addressing here, that counsel allow me to file a petition with the court. The court will then enter an order to the election board to set an election to fill his remaining seat. I think the practicalities are, given when this is and people signing up and that sort of thing, it wouldn't make practical sense to do it before the next regular election in November. So the petition would say that, that counsel move the court to fill his seat at the next November election. And then by separate process, that I guess we'll talk about in a minute, would be, there's a forty-five day period within which counsel would fill an interim slot until that election occurs, similar to what happened when Mr. Bradley resigned. So I expect that counsel will solicit people to apply, and we'll go through that process first. But the first things first is to petition the court to set an election.
And Cam, do you just need a consensus from us? Do we have to actually act on it?
Yeah, you probably should vote.
Okay. Okay. Counsel, do we have any questions for Cam? Then I would entertain a motion to give Cam the ability to get the authorization or the authorization for petition to fill the vacancy.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Pillion, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Vice Mayor Quetch, I think she got you. Any discussion, counsel? Hearing none, Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Owens?
Aye.
Ms. Pillion?
Aye.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
And Mayor Webb?
Aye. I don't think we have any old business tonight. We do have some miscellaneous business and communications from the town manager. Earl, you've been awfully quiet down there this evening, not to put you on the hot seat, but your time may be coming here, huh? No, I'm just teasing. So we already did the swearing-in of the sergeants, so we'll, of course, not do that again, although it was a great little ceremony. Number two was a memorandum of understanding by the town of Damascus and the town of Abingdon regarding maintenance of the Virginia Creeper Trail. Cam?
Yes, sir. You may recall that counsel authorized me to draft and the town manager to enter into a memorandum of understanding with Damascus for us to work on the Creeper Trail trestles. It has apparently long been the understanding, without it being written down, that even though, and we've talked about this many times, from the trailhead to Drowning Ford, Abingdon and Damascus own whatever they own jointly. But Abingdon, historically, for time immemorial, before anybody was here, Abingdon has always done, has always maintained that stretch. But everybody knows that, and that's what we've done, and that's what we've spent. But no one knows of that in writing. So what I would ask counsel to do is authorize me, similarly to what we did for the trestle project, to just have a general memorandum of understanding that we will maintain and pay for the trail from here to Drowning Ford. It will say something similar to, if Damascus will make efforts to acquire funding and participate when they can, but we'll do it in the absence of that and that we have their permission, basically, to work on what is joint property.
Makes perfect sense to me. Counsel, do we have any questions for Cam?
Quick question, but that doesn't mean that we are a hundred percent responsible. Damascus will hopefully participate financially.
We encourage them to participate, yes, sir. But I think the point is, we're already doing it, and we probably will continue to do so, but we'll give them the opportunity to do it. But we have permission to be working on what is their joint property specifically.
What is it, first fifteen or sixteen miles?
Drowning Ford is eight or, yeah, eight, seven and a half, depending on where you measure it from. You have that memorized.
Round trip.
Yeah, remember, that's where VDOT is gonna do the new bridge. So it's, you know, right under that bridge, right by somebody's house. It's, yeah, right at the seven.
Makes sense. Earl, anything you'd like to add to that?
The only thing that I would like to add to that, Mr. Mayor, is that I am just so thoroughly impressed with the level of effort that's going into the Creeper Trail right now in general. It is really gratifying to see such a wonderful piece of infrastructure being improved even further to the benefit of not just Abingdon or Virginia, but our nation.
Thank you. Well said, well said. All right, so Cam, I guess you need us to take action on this?
Yes, sir, if you'd just authorize me to draft and the town manager enter into a memorandum of understanding as listed there.
All right. So counsel, I would entertain a motion to allow Cam and Earl to draft and go enter into a MOU, a memorandum of understanding with the town of Damascus. Anybody want?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Mr. Owens, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Pillion, any discussion, counsel? Hearing none, Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Ms. Owens?
Aye.
Ms. Pillion?
Aye.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
And Mayor Webb?
Aye. That brings us to the presentation of our quarterly report. Chris, I will put you on the hot seat now. Come on down. This is Chris Pritt. For all of you guys that don't know him, he's from Woodard and Curran, and he's doing a great job.
Good evening here tomorrow. You should have a copy of our operations report so I can read through the entire report or hit the high points and answer any questions you may have.
I think we've, knowing this, counsel, we've all pretty much read it. So if you want to hit the highs and lows and your concerns, we would appreciate it.
Yeah, of course, we have assumed operations and maintenance of the facility and the collection system, January one. We've been working very hard to ensure the facility's operating efficiently and improve efficiencies where we can. For the month of January and February, actually, there has been no compliance issues, no OSHA reportable incidents. And some of the difficulties we're having in the treatment is the SCADA, which we're addressing. Actually, probably this week, been working with the capital improvement plan to try to upgrade our SCADA system at the treatment facility and at the pump stations. So the town should get a proposal this week of the cost of that.
And the SCADA is the computer system, is that correct?
Yes.
And it's just outdated, is that what?
It's very outdated, the SCADA system and the PLCs. The pump stations don't actually have them. The plant does, but it's very outdated, desperately needs improved. So we've had a lot of issues with that. We're still trying to get access to our Antero maintenance system, get that up to date where we can track what maintenance we're doing and do work orders. We are doing some work orders now. There's a leak developed in the primary clarifier sludge tank. It's not really causing any issues, but it does need to be repaired. So we're looking for someone who can prepare that for us. And our special waste building is not functional. It's not been functional for some time. And that's where we would take septic or grease. So Woodard and Curran is evaluating that at this time, so.
Where is that being, where is that waste and grease going now if that building's not?
Well, we're not taking any grease right now. The plant really, it's not in shape to take it. We are taking septic, we take that if it works or can be screened. But the special waste building was engineered and built to treat more efficiently the septic. Septic hoppers can come in, swipe cars, you know exactly how many gallons, it's not gas work. Things are filtered out. So the special waste building was built for that. And for numerous reasons, I guess, they quit using it some time ago. So, but we are evaluating that, and I think have a proposal to get that lined out, fixed.
But the restaurants have services that they pick up the grease from and they bring it somewhere else?
Yeah, yeah. Most towns, the restaurants, they have, I can't think of the names of them off the top of my head, but they have, they come in special, especially pump out the grease in tankers. They haul up to either Roanoke or Knoxville. They haul up either Roanoke or Knoxville. And I think we've had some local septic haulers doing that service as well, so.
Yeah, we've had, we've had a few local requests, I believe, for that very reason. And certainly, we're glad that you guys are taking a look at our facility to see if there's something we can accept.
Yeah, they, they quit taking it some time ago. They were having issues with the plant, and it's really not good on the plant, particularly a domestic biological treatment plant. So Woodard and Current is evaluating that to see how practical that would be if we could get the special waste building up and going, and evaluate the digesters to see how well it could treat the grease.
So if that happens, then that would be a fee for service, Chris?
Yes.
That we would be charging whoever brings it in?
Yeah. Right now, I think the fee has been for grease, I think eight and a half cents a gallon. So in the past, when we take it and took it, so. That may need to be reevaluated too. Our certified laboratory, we actually changed laboratories this past month to try to get some more timely results from our laboratories. So there's no overflows that occurred in February, which, from what I've seen so far, that's kind of anomaly not to have overflows. So there was no overflows in February. We're making that for it in March and April, so. Woodard and Current is assisting the town engineer and CHA in addressing some of the INI overflow issues throughout the collection system. In the month of February, we had eighty-eight compliance samples, no, no rescursions, a hundred percent compliant. For the month of February, our effluent flow was eighty point five eight million gallons for the month. And with a minimum effluent average of one point oh one million gallons a day.
Good question on that.
Yep.
What is that? What is influit and effluent?
Influit is what comes into the plant, effluent is what leaves the plant, so.
So that's?
More or less, what, what we treated in the month was eighty point five eight million gallons for the month of February. Our minimum flow for the month averaging each day was one point zero one million gallons. Our daily max was eight point four eight, so, and our average was two point nine five. So that tells you, and we had like over six inches of rain in February, so it just tells you how much water, rainwater retreating. So we had a minimum of one point oh one, a max of eight point four eight, and an average of two point nine five.
So how do you?
The plant's designed to treat four point nine five.
So if it all comes in at the same time, how do you separate influit? The storm water versus just the sewage?
This is, this is over, over the twenty-eight days in February. This is average.
Yeah, but what I'm meaning is, how do you know how to separate rainwater versus, well, not separate, how do you determine that value of what is actually sewage?
You look at the day that it rained.
Is, well, seven point two, how do you determine that amount? I mean, what?
There, we have, we have flow monitors that monitor the flow.
So it's predictable model then, that as, you know, as it rains, it obviously breaches and?
Right.
And what's a, I mean, this may be a stupid question, but it's kind of along with the lines of what Mike's saying. What's, what, how do we want to bridge that? Like, what would be an acceptable? Or where would we, where would the desired range be as opposed to one versus eight?
Well, you're always gonna have a little bit of INI.
Sure.
And that's just, that's just a given. And actually, a little bit helps. But on an average day, we'll treat one point eight to two point oh. That's probably where we're at. So when we don't have a lot of rain, that's about what we treat on a day's time, so.
So what would be your goal to get it down to the INI? What would be an acceptable point to where? Or I might be asking a question you can't answer, but?
Yeah, and that's what I was getting at, is I don't know if you can answer that or not.
That's gonna be hard, it's gonna be hard for me to tell it at this time, but, you know, if you can get down below twenty percent INI, that's really good. So, say, we're treating two, two million gallons a day on average when we don't get a lot of rain. So if we can get that down to two, two point five, we'd be doing really good. The plant's designed for four point nine five. The saving grace for the treatment plant down is the equalization basin that we have there. So we're able to, when we do it with high flows, we're able to send a lot of water to the equalization basin, and it's filtered in over time.
So, so as it doesn't overwhelm the?
Yeah, yeah. It still overwhelms the plant, but not to the point where, yeah. So, yeah, and you see some of our concentrations for permit compliance for CBOD, the monthly average for the effluent was three point eight milligrams per liter. Our permit limit is twenty, so we're way under that. And for the max, it's four point six, our permit limit is thirty. For ammonia, our permit limit is point two four, and, or, not permit limit, our average is point two four, our permit limit is five. Now, our max flow, effluent flow was one point two one, our permit limit is seven three. For TSS, our monthly average effluent was three point four, permit limit is thirty. Our max is four point nine, permit limit forty-five. So we're way, way under our permit limits, which is good. For the month, we sent out ninety-nine point oh three metric tons of sludge to the landfill. Year-to-date, it's one eighty-two point nine three tons. The following annual reports were submitted on behalf of the town of Abingdon by Woodard and Current during January and February. These reports are inclusive data collected by the town of Abingdon operations staff during twenty-one. Given the lack of retained employees, there were no guidance or institutional knowledge really remaining. So it took a great deal of effort on our behalf to try to identify and correct information to complete the reports, which we did, such as the annual phosilize report that's submitted to the EPA, or annual phosilize report that's submitted to DEQ, or Tier Two report to DEQ, and our Form Three Hundred A to OSHA. Our O and N specialists and outside support staff were largely responsible for operating the treatment plant during February, while our local staff were trained and other personnel recruited, which to be able to have those resources is tremendous. In an instance like this, or any instance when there's a shortage in the job market, trying to find employees, if you have people who are sick, or the, when we're in the pandemic, you know, you have a whole crew of people getting sick and quarantined. So for them to be able to have people that they can bring in from Georgia and Florida and different locations is, is great, is great to be able to have that ability.
Are you experiencing this shortage in all of your plants?
Yeah, yeah, that's, I think it's, it's across the scale.
Yeah.
A lot, a lot of the skilled labor people are done exited. Some will be, in the next five years, we'll see a tremendous amount more, so.
Because of aging out?
Yeah, yeah. And a lot, a lot of young people get in, getting into the skill field trade.
Yeah, so it's not sexy, is it?
Well, I mean, it's, it's a pretty good field. I mean, it's, there's a lot of benefits, you know, the water, water and wastewater industry. You have in, you have a lot of variety, you have inside work, outside work, maintenance, paper, I mean, anything, lab work. So there's, there's a lot of good points to it. You can go anywhere in the world and work, so. So our, our target right now is fourteen employees at the plant collections. We just hit that, we've hired everyone. Actually, our chief operator, she started today. We have another operator that she will start in two weeks. And we've hired a maintenance manager and another collection person that'll probably come on board at the end of April, first of May, and that'll give us our fourteen. And we are, done some data collection and management. We've taken out a hundred and twenty-five clipboards that were across the plant. They'd go by daily and take two or three hours to jot down stuff and bring it back in and put it into their system. So now we've, we've purchased little tablets, so they just go around, they put everything in the tablets, automatically transferred to our Hawk Whim system, and where we can do trending and reports with that. So it's a lot more efficient and saves time. And done some process control sampling and analysis. Woodard and Current is big on health and safety. We have a, a safety meeting each morning before we start work. Speak, I speak to the high-flow conditions during the month. We had six point two one inches of rain in February, which is quite a bit of rain. It resulted in extremely high flow rates. We had to actually turn on the large merciful pump in the equalization basin, just, just to keep up. So we operated approximately ten hours each day on the February twenty-fourth and twenty-fifth to keep up. Emergency callouts, we had four emergency callouts during February in the collection system. Water disconnects, we had sixty-eight, which I think that was held over a couple of months. So that number was a little elevated.
And is that just people moving or, or non-payment, what?
Uh, yeah.
Alibat?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. Page three, three one, you see some of the maintenance management we've done. One of the biggest projects we did, which it, we had a confined space entry to do it, we replaced all seventy-two filter flots in the filter, UV filter. Which is quite a big job. Had some SCADA, PLC, communication was lost, nine PLCs throughout the treatment system. I would encourage people remotely, some of our SCADA experts remotely, were able to dial in and help remotely to get some of that back online. So again, it's just a lot of PLCs and SCADA issues that we're, that we're gonna get hopefully functioning, functioning better once we upgrade everything, be able to be more efficient, be able to have more controls and remote, remote controlling of the plant as well. We had a power outage February twenty-third, it caused us some additional issues. Caused some other issues in the plant. We had to call out a electrician to just evaluate and look at the systems before we could get it back online. We have two power systems that come into the, feed the plant. One system went out, the other system didn't come on and function properly, and there were some issues there through the plants, which I think we've got that lined out now too. Of course, we've done a lot of preventive maintenance work orders, we're trying to get that lined out. Once we get access that we need to that Bantaro program, we'll be able to do that a lot more efficiently. Industrial pretreatment, we have forty-five loads of septic, septic, it was delivered to the plant. It's seven and a half cents a gallon, that's about thirty-three hundred nineteen dollars and fifty cents of revenue for the month. And the egg wash, there was six loads brought in February, thirty-six hundred gallons. It's about eighteen hundred dollars, it's five cents a gallon.
Now, what is egg wash?
It's from Dutton Wagner. So it's when they, they washed eggs, it's the waste.
So it's literal egg wash?
And we did a COD, COD on it today, and it was like thirty-eight thousand.
Eggs or dollars?
About thirty-eight thousand milligrams per liter, which is very, very high, I'm sorry.
He lost me there, wow.
No, no.
Units matter.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Didn't mean to shock you. But, you know, we're charging five cents a gallon for that, which I think that's been going on for years.
So that's something we need to evaluate.
Definitely needs to be evaluated, because with what they're bringing, and I talked to the gentleman today, actually, and he's wanting to start bringing three loads a week, and that's six thousand, six thousand gallons per load. So, and it's, it's not very good for the plant, you know, particularly with the high COD levels. And we're gonna do some further testing on it this week too, just to see. But we need to reevaluate that definitely, because if we're just paying five cents a gallon for that, that's pretty, pretty cheap. To health and safety, when we started in January, a health and safety team came down, and there was two hundred and seventy-four action items that needed to be addressed, which is quite a bit, at the plant and the pump stations. Eighty-four of these items have been taken care of during February, it's thirty-one percent. And actually, during March, that, that should go up quite a bit, because we did a lot, a lot of the action items, we got rectified during March. And again, there was no, no related safety incidents, thankfully. The arc's, arc flash signage on the control panels is out of date, and the arc flash is pretty serious. OSHA takes it pretty seriously. And we were trying to find the last study that was done, and I reached out to CHA and finally got a copy of the study, which was done in twenty-fourteen. And the study is supposed to be done every five years, so we're, we're looking at trying to get a quote and see what that would cost to do another arc flash study. Let's see, let's move on ahead to administrative activities. You see the staff members there, filling some of the blanks now. Shannon Turner, she's our chief operator, she actually started today. Maintenance manager will be Tommy Stacy, he's from Abingdon. And another operator, Samantha Sint from Abingdon, who we started on the eighteenth. And Tommy Garland will be joining the collections team, probably sometime in the month. So that'll give us our fourteen, and then we'll see, see how that goes, see what we can do with that. That many staff members. Some of the O and N support staff, Sam Stanley, he's been awesome. He's been here the duration, more or less. He's a operational specialist, he's been training our operators. He has had to learn the plant and is still learning the plant, again, because there's really no one, no one there to give you any institutional knowledge or why things were done a certain way. Paul Oregon, he was a maintenance specialist out of Massachusetts. He's been here sometime. Kevin Regone, an operator, maintenance person, has done some help. And some of our support staff on table six-three, some of the corporate support staff, that's been helping us with some of the different functions, from IT to management to human resources, SCADA. So Woodard and Current has a vast number of support out there that we would need in just about anything. That's pretty much, pretty much it. If there's any other questions or?
I appreciate these, these reports, and I feel like I'll be able to operate one of those plants by the time we get this, you know what an egg wash is and all that.
You come down anytime, we'll get you trained.
I'll make it sexy.
I've, I've been trying, but it's not worked so far. Yeah, so.
One, one more?
Anytime you have questions about anything, you don't have to wait till, you should have my number. Can my number just reach out to me if anything, any questions, concerns?
I got one more quick question.
Yes, sir.
Obviously, we've had a lack of preventative maintenance and repairs, and you all are getting on top of that. And, and any idea where we'll be caught up, you know, in the future with these things? I know I'm putting you on the spot with that.
Well, I don't know that you're ever caught up. There's always something to do.
But some of these things?
Even if you start with a brand-new plant, you should have preventive maintenance, you should be planning ahead, being proactive.
But some of these things are things that shouldn't have been done years ago, like these plans.
Yeah, and some of it, you know, it's just stuff that you should do and plan for as you go, rather than waiting till everything, you know, that you have is in disrepair, so.
Well, thank you for your work.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the report.
Thank you for the report.
Now, up we have a presentation by the town arborist, Kevin Segman. Well?
I understand there's a basketball game on tonight.
I heard that.
There's a rumor. So I will adopt the old preacher's model, I will stand up, speak up, shut up. How about that? Mayor Webb, members of town council, Mr. Mathers, it's an honor as always to be able to come and talk to you about the, what I like to call the state of the trees address and let you know how things are looking out there, out there in terms of our trees here in the town of Abingdon. Let you know things are going very well out there. I have given you, hopefully you have in front of you, the highlights from this past year. Let me just go over those very quickly here. Of course, the number one thing is always is our Tree City USA status, which we have been maintaining. This past year, we did hit our 20-year celebration. We wanted it to be something nice and big. Unfortunately, the pandemic kind of put the quietus on that, so, but, but we still were able to acknowledge that. We did finally have a proclamation there, there at the end of the year with the memorial trees up there in, at their Veterans Memorial Park. Just to make you aware, the state of Virginia has 59 communities that are Tree City USA status and Abingdon continues to be the westernmost community. Marion and Abingdon, we kind of hold that distinction down here in southwest Virginia. We're trying to change that, but we're, you know, some communities are a little more, a little more, not as upfront as this community is here, but still, we are continuing along with our Tree City USA status and of course, that is very much of a major feather in our cap. The biggest program that the, the tree commission worked on this past year, one I think that we are very proud of and I think one that we want to really continue, is our tree giveaway program. This past year was our inaugural year with that. I freely admit that we stole this idea from Fredericksburg, Virginia, but with their blessings. They were, they were very, very cool with it. The organization up there is called Free Tree Fredericksburg and they were a great assistance to us down here. We were able to give away over 200 trees and they were very small trees in one gallon pots last, last June. We had 71 families, households participated in this and as, those are, and I will state that these are just not communities or people within the town limits. Because of our corporate sponsorships, they do extend out beyond the, the limits of Abingdon. So we did open up the program outside of the town limits. The vast majority were within the town limits and within Washington County, but we did have a few that go outside of that, but still, we felt like it was well worth the effort for that. We gave away dogwood, red bud, black gum and white oak, four native trees and the response was just absolutely phenomenal. One of the things that we quickly learned is not to utilize my phone for this, that it quickly blew it up, it blew up my, my voicemail and several people downstairs on the bottom floor and I spent three days calling people back up saying, "Sorry, we're sold out, sorry, we're sold out, sorry, we're sold out, sorry, we're sold out." We're working on right now, an online registration form for this. We're going to try to get it on the town website and make it to where that's going to be the main way of doing it, that's going to really alleviate a lot of pressure here on the manpower that we have down here. But we are looking forward to continuing that in this, this coming year. We continue our association with the veterans groups up there at Veterans Memorial Park. This past year, we put in six trees up there in, in the park. Currently, there are 89 memorial trees up there, which I think is a great, great thing. The trees are all looking very well. I will tell you that I've already got an order for 10 trees up there this spring, so that's going to keep me very busy. It's just one of those things, you just can't gauge, you know, last spring it was one tree, this year it's 10, you know, you just, you just can't forecast that. So, you know, we'll do, we'll do the best we can there with that and so, but I think the park is really looking nice, especially in keeping with the view sheds that we have up there. The sled, the sleigh riding area right there, we want to keep that open and of course, we want to make sure that we're not blocking anything that, that would be of significance for the veterans there in terms of out there on Coming Street. So we're working, we're working well with them. And of course, the sports complex, that was a big project and of course, you know, I didn't do any of the planting there, but we, the, the tree commission and I, we reviewed all the pro, you know, all the plans there with that. We made some major, major adaptions to that and I, and I think things have gone out well. The trees are all now in and we are, you know, we'll be monitoring those trees for their health and make sure that everything is looking good there. You know, after a major construction job like that, you know, you've got to make sure those trees are going to be looking good because that's going to be such a feather in our cap there. It's something that we, the town can be proud of and we, we want to make sure those trees are looking good out there. And let you know, guys, we are working on coming up with a tree for Mr. Anderson. We, we've got a tree that I want to put in what's called a, it's a flowering cherry tree, it's one of the longer-lived flowering cherry trees. We've got several of them out here on Valley Street right now. They're called higan cherries. They even bloom a little bit in the fall when the weather gets warm and I think if we can have that tree in full bloom when soccer season starts and baseball season starts down there in the park, I think that's going to be a great thing. So I've been working with Mike in terms of trying to find a good location on that. Kyle is on top of it all, so we're, I think we're, and I'm hoping, 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 hoping. I'm still talking with our local nurseries that we can find one here very local, if not, we'll try to get one in online here, you know, from one of the online nurseries and see if we can get it in this weekend, I'm hoping, ain't guaranteed, but I'm hoping there on that. Another project that we've been working on is our heat map, is the heat mapping project. This is something that came to us, Abingdon was one of 10 communities in, in the state of Virginia, which this was done this past summer, where raw data was collected throughout the town. We had volunteers throughout the town coming in, basically taking readings in the morning and in the afternoon in the summer and getting just, you know, just to see where, where the hotspot, literally the hotspots are here in the town. And, and they have presented us with the raw data on that and it's data that I, I can't, I can't understand it, I have no idea. I'm clueless on that, I'm just a little tree trimmer by trade. And so, but we're going to be working with Emory and Henry College, that is the, the college that, that's, that's working with us on that. And what we're hoping for is that students from Emory and Henry will come down into these areas, into these neighborhoods that have been identified as these areas can be greatly affected by additional trees. We're hoping we'll get some grant money in from the Virginia Department of Forestry on that. We, everything is still kind of in the early stages on that, we don't know monies yet or anything like that, but that's all coming in and this should be working on this fall. Other tree plantings that we did, one of the big things was in terms of trying to address any concerns out there on the creeper trail, in regards to any visual issues out there regarding the sports complex, we did come in and plant over 300 bare root seedlings out there, there along the creeper trail, there in the wooded areas, there in the creeper trail, the areas that we felt like would have great benefit there, once those, once those little seedlings get some size to them, to, to help block out any visual issues or any visual concerns there between the sports complex and the, and the trail itself. And so like, we always expect we'll have a little bit of, you know, some of those trees that don't make it, that's why we put in over 300 out there. And so, but we think that that will certainly aid us in the time, in the time to come. We are continuing to see the effects of the Emerald Ash Bor here in town. We're, if the trees are, like I tell people, if you don't spend the money to treat your, your ash tree, you're going to spend the money to have to, have it cut down. And we are really now kind of in that, in that stage right now with the trees around here. We have continued to treat several significant ash trees here in the town and we are still continuing to monitor and remove other ash trees as, as we, as we can get to them. So that is still something that's still very much on the forefront. And we're also looking down on the creeper trail as well, because there are some ash trees down there. I've continued with my speaking engagements here with the local nature organizations. This past Saturday, I was down at Steel Creek Park with the tree, there's the treekeepers down there and I've continued my association with the Russell County and Washington County Master Gardeners and doing tree pruning exercises with them. I've continued my association with the town of Marion as well as the Board of Directors for Trees Virginia, which is the Virginia Urban Forest Council, as well as the Mid-Atlantic Chapter of the International Society of Arbiculture and, and with the Virginia Big Tree Program. And then as always, this is something I always place a heavy emphasis on, I always try to make myself available there on Fridays to any care or any concerns from the general public out there in terms of their trees on private property, I do act as a consultant on that. I can give them some guidance and, you know, and, but I, but then once they start bringing in contractors, that's when, of course, when I step away and let them, let them deal with that. Goals and objectives for the coming year, of course, we're going to continue with our Tree City USA status. We're continuing on with our, with our round two of our tree giveaway program. I can say that we're going to be able to up the ante, we're bringing in over 300 trees this year. We've got Johnson Memorial Hospital on board with us this year and so they're helping us as long as, as well as some of the sponsors we had from last year, but we are going to be able to get in over 300 trees, which I think is great. We're continuing with the planting projects, like I said, there on Veterans Memorial Park. Monitoring all those new plantings down there at this forest complex will be a pretty big endeavor in and of itself. We've got several trees that we're very interested in, that I've done some preliminary measurements on here in Washington County in terms of they may be candidates for the Virginia Big Tree Program. Some, most of you guys probably have had, if you have a live Christmas tree at your house, you probably use a Fraser fir tree. That seems to be the tree of choice down here. We may have the national champion Fraser fir tree up in front of you, right up here on Old Saltworth Road. I've driven by it, goodness gracious knows how many times. And finally, somebody spotted out and said, "I think that's a, I thought it was something else just because you drive by it." And somebody said, "I think that's a Fraser fir." We went out and did some preliminary measurements and if it is what we think it is, it will be the national champion Fraser fir tree, which is something I think is very, very cool with that. Continuing my association with Trees Virginia, Mid-Atlantic Chapter of the International Society of Arbiculture and as well as the town of Marion, and I continue to be available to town residents. Make sure you guys know, April 14th, 2:00 PM at EB Stanley, will be our Arbor Day celebration there. Love to have you guys there. And you have proclamation read. And so feel free to come, feel free to get your hands dirty, as I tell the kids there, because when you plant a tree, you get dirty. And I, and that's one of the things I love about it. So feel free to come. Like I said, EB Stanley, 2 o'clock, y'all are most welcome and most invited and we would love to see you here. And, and we'll be, just to let you know, I'm working with the school beautification club, we'll be planting a dogwood tree out there in the back, in the back of the property. And let me, let me just state right off, right here at the end, that the appreciation for the, the support that, that the arborist gets from town council. It is tremendous, it is just anything beyond what I expected and I can tell you in talking, my association with other town, town foresters, city foresters, what have you, the association and the relationship and the support that I get from you guys is envied, is envied. And so, believe me, it, I, I, I notice it and I appreciate it and I thank you very much. And I'll open you up to any questions.
I just appreciate your great work that you've done.
Well, thank you.
And the very first board that I ever served on was the tree commission.
Yes, sir.
And that's when both of us had hair.
Yes, sir.
It was back a while.
Yes, sir, it was. Yes, and what, and what we had back then wasn't gray either.
No, correct.
Mike, I, I, I greatly appreciate it. Amanda is our, is our representative and we have lively meetings, we enjoy them. I always like to say, you know, we try to keep things nice and loose there, you know, we, you know, y'all know very well and y'all go by Robert's Rules of Order. Well, down there with the tree commission, we use Bobby's rules. That's how we do it. It's enough there to where we keep in line and, and once again, we, we get in there and get the business done and then, but yeah, we have a good time and like I said, we've got a good group. We've got, we've got a very good group on the tree commission right now and I appreciate them very much.
Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
All right. That brings us to Myanna again for discussion regarding section 3828 weeds and trash as a public nuisance. Come on down.
All right. So my memo started that it's that time of year again, the grass is grown. So we provided public notification for media distribution to remind the community about a piece of code that earliest I think I can find it is 1995. So it's been around for 25 years. Unlike the accolades that the police department got when they said they were going to, you know, monitor the speeding on Valley, we kind of got boos and cheers that we were monitoring grass. It is an annual thing, it's seasonal. The specific discussion is around, you know, what is a weed? The definition of weed is any plant, grass or other vegetation over 10 inches in height. So it takes a while, we're not out there making sure that grass is cut every day. The bulk of code enforcement often revolves around this weed growing season, so that's another reason to just put it out there, give people information, make sure that no one's startled if, if they have to go through that process. I will say that we have Adam Heath on board, he's our code enforcement officer now. We have done, well, he's already done great things. We sent a, or we got a landing page put on. Also, John Phelps helped us to create a code compliance department page on the town's website. So now when people call in or they ask a question, we can just direct people to the right spot and understand that things are going to be taken into consideration. And he has done a great, a great job since being in the office. So no, this is a, our process is complaint-driven, so that's another thing. We're not out driving around really like trying to identify whether or not violations occur. But if anyone identifies a violation, you know, our goal is compliance. It's not to find people, it's not to try to send people down a difficult process. It's just that if things aren't completed and compliance isn't achieved, then we do have a process in which we can actually take some action. So there's no proposed changes to any of the processes that are currently being followed, that weren't previously followed. We're just trying to create a very organized, uniform way in which we implement it. So Kim has also been super helpful in reviewing our internal process documentation to make sure that, you know, if, if a compliance case gets all the way to a situation in front of a judge that have identified enough information, have done the correct steps in order to, to take it to this final, the final action. So I just, there was kind of a lot of chatter about it and so I just wanted to come and see if there are any additional questions.
Well, I, I followed the commentary and it was quite humorous, to be quite hon, you know, to be honest with you. It was very colorful. It escalated very quickly, as they say, and, and, and just... To, to reiterate what Myanna said, we're, we're not creating a new, you know, punitive punishment system, this is the same code that's been there for 25-plus years. If you live in the county and not in the town, we're not interested in your grass or your weeds for that matter. But no, I did think it was quite entertaining. I had a good time reading through it. Did y'all see that stuff? But thank you for clarifying that for us, very helpful.
Yeah, just wanted to make sure that if there were any additional questions you knew and again, if anything, you know, if you do find out that there's comments about certain topics, you can always, you know, come and ask and we're more than happy to provide clarification.
As I said, you're very thorough, we appreciate that very much. Counsel, any questions for Myanna?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I do have, I have had people call me before and say, "I can't see at certain intersections. I almost got hit because somebody hasn't trimmed weeds." Or I've had people complain about certain areas in town, "Why don't they have to keep, they're in the historic district, why don't they have to keep their property looking nice?" So it's, it's nice to have public clarification, so when somebody asks you that question, you can point them to code compliance. And I had somebody call me already that I sent to you. So I appreciate, I appreciate having it in black and white.
It is, it is important, it is an important part of the process, that closing that loop, you know, you can have all the codes in the world, but you need to close that loop.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, how can I?
All right, counsel, that brings us to council member reports. Does anybody have a report they'd like to make or anything they'd like to share with the general public? Nope, 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 nope. All right.
Mayor, I think it would be just to have a consensus to authorize the town manager and I, I guess by probably looking at Kim, who will do this, but to solicit applications for the, the interim town... for the the interim town council
Yep.
position.
Sure.
We are we do have a 45-day deadline to complete that in.
Yeah, it does. Yeah, time is of the essence. We certainly need to go ahead and move forward. You said you just need a consensus. We don't have to actually move anything.
Yeah.
Okay. So again, to clarify for anybody that's listening, this would be a seat, of course, that would be filled until the next election, which is in November. There will be a special election item on the ballot in November, along with the other three seats that are open, so there actually be four council seats on the ballot in November. And and one will be for two years, the other three will be for four years like normal. So it won't take the stagger away or anything of that nature. Is that fair to say, Cam?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And having said that, do we want to give Cam and Mr. Mathers authority?
Do we need to make a motion to do that?
I don't think so.
I don't think so. I think counsel, I don't think is technically taking any action until somebody is appointed, so we're just facilitating the process right now.
Yeah, it will just be advertised.
This
Kim will be doing the advertising and writing at the same time. Impressive. So, yeah, similarly to what we did the last time, we'll advertise
I think in every avenue possible is the answer.
Yeah. But it will be a quick turnaround, because we have to do this and make the formal within 45 days, right?
Yes, sir. What happens if there's not an appointment in 45 days?
Technically, nothing, but Yeah, that's not gonna happen. How's that it for answers?
So Mike asked, what happens if we don't make the appointment within 45 days? And Cam assured us that it's gonna happen within 45 days. So you've got our consensus, I think we can we can move forward with that. Having said all that, if there's no council member reports, I would like to say, and I know this is kind of, you know, cart behind the horse, if you will, or horse behind the cart, it's getting late, but this is the first formal meeting that that Mr. Mathers had joined us in, and we appreciate you and your service to the town. You're doing a great job, and we're glad to have you. So thanks for being here with us.
Well, thank you very much for the opportunity.
Absolutely, absolutely. That does bring us to the section where we're having a closed session, and I would entertain a motion to go into closed session so that everybody can go home and get some rest.
I'll make a motion that we go into closed session pursuant of Code of Virginia 1950 as amended to discuss a matter involving disposition of publicly held real property because discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect our bargaining position and pursuant to Code of Virginia 1950 as amended, Section 2.2-3711A1, for the purpose of considering applications for appointment for positions on Tourism Advisory Committee and Sustain Abingdon and Planning Commission.
So we have the motion by Mr. Owens to go into closed session for all those reasons. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Pillion. Any discussion, counsel? Hearing none. Kim, if you'll please call the roll.
Mr. Owens?
Aye.
Ms. Pillion?
Aye.
Ms. Quetch?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you all for coming out. I don't blame you if you don't stay till the end of the closed session.